All right. We now call to order the regular Town Council meeting for June 22nd, 2021. And we will start with our work session and we will leave this room, council chambers, and transition to the third floor training room. So we'll do that at this time. We were in a work session before, so we'll now move with the regular business. And I'll start with an invocation. So tonight's invocation, I do want to talk about how Apex is a blessed town. And it was evident of that today, I was walking downtown Salem Street with our new intern right there, Eva Picora, and we saw the great ambassador, J.C. Knowles. And, yes, exactly, J.C. J.C. shared with me, it's been 14 months that he's been stuck in the house because of the pandemic and he couldn't get out and about in Apex. And JT loves, J.C. loves this town. He loves downtown. He loves interacting with people. And that's what Apex is all about. We're connected as one. And I want to make sure, as we continue to move on, no matter what problems we have in town, whether it's parking or anything, we're connected and we can get through this as one. So that's my invocation for tonight. Let's keep moving in the right direction because there is nothing we can't accomplish when we work together. This is Apex. With that, we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. We'll start with our first proclamation tonight in its Parks and Recreation Month 2021. So with that, we'll always do a shared reading with our council because we are one, we're a team. So we'll start with Councilmember Terry Mahaffey and read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this county, country, including the town of Apex, North Carolina, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and...
Whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and...
Whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and...
Whereas parks and recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife, and...
Whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and where the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and...
Whereas the town of Apex recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Apex Town Council that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Apex, and all citizens are hereby encouraged to join in our park and recreation story, July 2021, by participating in and experiencing all public parks and recreation services have to offer. Signed this 22nd day of June 2021. And I will call upon our Parks and Rec Interim Director, Mr. Craig Sesser. If you would please come up. And I'll have the intern, Ms. Eva, if you would come take a picture. And council behind me standing up, please.
Yeah, I got a couple.
All right, thank you. As you were saying, thank you for all of your work and our Parks and Recreation team for their basic job here. Certainly appreciate it very much. All right, keep up the great work. All right. All right, second proclamation, Night of Light for Survivors of Trafficking on June 24th, 2021. Shared reading, Councilmember Mahaffey.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the town of Apex, North Carolina possesses a nurturing community and resources to make a lasting impact in the lives of others, retaining a population of over 69,000 and a median household income of over $111,000, and...
Whereas human trafficking occurs through the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of forced labor or sexual servitude, and...
Whereas sex trafficking occurs when an individual engages in a commercial sex act such as prostitution as a result of force, fraud, or coercion, and whereas the average age of the time sex trafficking begins is 17 years of age, where many victims are coerced within familial relations and see their perpetrator on a regular basis, and...
Whereas North Carolina ranks number 11 in the number of reported cases of human trafficking in the nation, and whereas sex trafficking and pornography are incredibly interwoven, as many sites do not require verification of consent for any of the videos uploaded, and...
Whereas the truth of trafficking has been hidden in the dark and awareness needs to be brought to light to educate community members on the reality, and...
Whereas the number of restoration opportunities for survivors is currently not enough to serve survivors. Now therefore, I, Jack K. Gilbert, Mayor of the town of Apex, proclaim June 24th as a night of light to bring awareness to sex trafficking of women and urge the community to support efforts to fight this issue. Signed the 22nd day of June. And I would like to call Brittany Williams from Esther International up front to accept the proclamation.
So Thursday night this week, we are holding a Night of Light. The goal in this is that we want to create light in Apex. Apex is not just a peak of good living. We see that peak being a lighthouse. And when people are in darkness and they are looking for direction, they look toward a light. And Apex is a town that I know very well. I grew up here, I went to Apex High School, and I love this town. And I know the resources that it holds for survivors of trafficking. And there is a lot of need when it comes to trafficking, and I know that Apex can make a huge dent in the survivors that can come. And so we just ask that you will join us on Thursday. Our goals are to create restoration here in Apex, including a home, including awareness and education for our community. And I think that this is just the beginning to something we can do together. So I thank you so much for your support.
All right, thank you colleagues for joining in with that proclamation. We now move into the consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered routine to be enacted by one motion with the adoption of the consent agenda and without discussion. If a council member requests discussion of an item, the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Are there any changes to the consent agenda before approval?
I have to abstain because there is a consent agenda one is about Western White Crisis issues.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
I'm second.
All right, discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right, the pass is 4-0. All right, we move now to setting the meeting agenda. And we do have one add-on, new business item. And if staff give us an update on that, town manager?
Yes, sir, Mayor, Council. This is the new business add-on that relates to City Pig Fest in July and just the use of the Park Town Hall parking lot.
Okay. Okay, so that has become new business three. Okay, with that change...
Motion approved.
All right.
I second it.
All right, discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right, the pass unanimously. We have a set agenda. We'll move now to the public forum. This is opportunity for the community to speak. And just to let you know that the council will be sitting and listening, we will not respond. This is your opportunity just to share what's on your heart, any changes you want to see with the town. And if you desire a return phone call, myself or staff will help you out with that. All right, so make sure you leave your information. So the first, David Blackwelder, if you would step up. You would share your name and your address for the record.
David Blackwelder, 213 Cosbrook Drive, Wake Forest. I just wanted to address you guys. I know I don't live here, however, I feel like that this issue concerns not only me but all the citizens of Wake County as well, especially the town of Apex. You know, I've just seen some troubling things with, you know, kind of like y'all's blatant attack on police by basically alleging that they're racist, things like that, without any facts to support it. And, you know, if you honestly wanted to be forthcoming and forthright about it, instead of doing a, just a biased review, somebody come in and ask them biased questions, how about you put out the facts? As some of you may know, the SBI automatically collects all the data on every single traffic stop that the police officers here do. You're going to know race, gender, what the stop was, disposition. How about you release that? I think that would be transparent because I think if you saw those facts, you would realize that they're not racist. Okay? And look, we're all for equity. We want transparency. I'm all for it. If there is a problem, it needs to be addressed. However, to just throw it out there on WRL and get some news time, I think that's wrong and irresponsible. And I don't think it's fair to the officers who now have a target on their back and you just sat there, you just broke every bridge that they've had to build with that community, which is only 6% of Apex anyways. I think if y'all actually really did truly care about people of color, you'd make it more affordable to live here, wouldn't you? But I guess your donors wouldn't really like that very much, would they? So, but besides that, I think that either you put it out there or you give them an apology because I don't think it's right what you did. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next is Diane Long. Three minutes.
You'll have to excuse me. I have a real hearing problem in my right ear, so I'm going to try to talk to you the best I know how. I'm Diane Long, and I have lived here since 1963, so that gives us 58 years that I have lived here in this town. My husband and I are married and came here shortly after that because he was going to get drafted and he had to make a decision about what he was going to do. So he joined the National Guard and I stayed here with his mother and father. And I was a hospital administrator when the hospital was over where the fire department is now on Hunter Street, and I did that job for 25 years. So I met a lot of people that I didn't know and saw how the town operated. Also, Allen's grandfather was the first postmaster here, and the post office is sitting down in the lobby of this building. It was the very first post office. So anyway, I really do have a vested interest in this town, and I'm concerned about a lot of different things. The first thing I want to talk about is the parking situation. And I had spoken to the mayor in another talk that we were having about the parking and about seniors being able to get to the downtown because as you grow older, you have a harder time walking, especially differences, so distances. So anyway, the parking on the North Salem Street really needs to stay like it is because of not only seniors and their ability to get to the stores, but also for the sake of the stores. And I was here when the stores were all owned by families and they started retiring and dying, and then the town became dead. And then the mayor and the town council came together, had somebody come, and you see what you see today. And I've said it to many people, that Apex is an example to other towns that have a problem with their downtown being kind of dead because it is beautiful, it invites people to come shopping, and it's just a very, a good example to others. So I hope that you will give consideration for people of all ages to be able to get to the stores downtown and to be able to keep it somewhat like it is now. And then, I, let's see, let me find my notes here. Okay. What changed was when the Research Triangle came here, it really changed this as well as Jordan Lake. I always heard, oh, if we just had sewage and water in Apex, we'd grow. Well, we did. Cary and Apex were about 2,000 people 58 years ago, and they took in the housing for the people in the Research Triangle. So anyway, it has made this population explosion that we have going on now. And so we need to be very thoughtful about how everything is developed because when I came to Raleigh, it was only about 90...
Time is up. Thank you so much.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't get to finish. Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Unity?
Thank you, Mayor. Three minutes still, if I'm representing more than one, okay. I frequent two local small businesses here in Apex. Both proprietors are gay and lesbian. I inform them both on 6921 about the Apex Pride Parade. Both proprietors were not aware of the upcoming parade and thank me for letting them know. Both mentioned that they feel a part of this community, though they know of you, they have never seen you or council stop by into their local shops to say hello. Selected officials are here for you. They would appreciate if taking the time to stop by and talk to them on how their small businesses are holding up during this and after this horrible pandemic. I am compelled to let you know this. Again, we are one Apex. We all climb long and hard to reach our one peak. We know as a humanity in unison, we are, you know, we know of the horrific deeds, both verbally and/or physically, unto our neighbor. The time is now to right the wrongs of history, both personally, individually, and collectively. I encourage all the majority of law-abiding citizens to stand and be the leaders we know we are, to guide as a combined of all people to say one. The negative parts of history will be thwarted and dissolved once and for all. We are the creators of our reality. We choose the role of who and what we play in. We all need to reflect from all faiths and beliefs God wants us to come home. We are all made in God's image. We are ready to come home. There are some who do not realize where home is, those who won or are not lost. We have been guiding them with our courage, strength, and love. Coming home is within oneself. Look in the mirror and walk back home. A recent president stated, "We all bleed the same blood." While true, I do not particularly like the saying. Then, I had a lightbulb moment. I poop, you poop, we all poop. We all need to get our poop together, get our poop together right now. Thank you.
All right, Jack Otepka. Otepka, I messed that up. Thank you for coming up.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. I'm Jack Otepka. I own 621 Productions, 118 North Salem Street, right in downtown Apex. I love Apex, I love downtown, I love being here. I will be here for a very long time, hopefully. Just regarding the downtown revitalization program, I've been very involved, I've been trying to be involved as possible. I just urge everyone in downtown and the council to please listen to the business owners, listen to the, the building owners especially, and please consider the handicap. I'm, oh, she left. But the previous speaker was, was great. My customers are mostly elderly. They need somewhere to get to my, my studio easily and accessibly. Think of the handicap when you're going and creating handicap spaces. Apex downtown right now is not very handicap accessible. It won't be very accessible if we do the plan the way it is right now. There are some great parts about it, there are some not so great parts about it. You've all heard many, many things about it. The other thing I'd like to mention is the Parks and Dime Program. If there's any way that we can end it before Pig Fest so that we can get back to closing the downtown and having the full street open so that everyone can enjoy ourselves now that COVID restrictions are a lot less, a lot less crazy right now. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for my time.
All right, that ends our public forum. We close public forum and move now into public hearings. In the first public hearing tonight, public hearing one, public hearing and possible motion to adopt an ordinance on the question of annexation, annexation 712.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. So this annexation is located right near Pleasant Park in the southern, kind of middle of our jurisdiction. You can see the right-of-way shown here in yellow. Basically, Kingsview Trail right-of-way was NCDOT maintained, but it has been turned over to the town at this time, and so it's being added to the Powell Bill list, and we need to annex it in order to be able to continue maintenance on it. Staff does recommend approval of the annexation.
All right. Question?
Diane, was that like a voluntary transfer? Or how's that work? I know like the, usually I thought the town like requested it. Maybe we did.
It's part of Pleasant Park's boundary, so I believe it was probably requested, but it wasn't, yes, Russell's saying yes.
Okay, okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Public hearing, open up public here first. All right, well, no public hearing comments right now. And don't have anyone signed up, so I'll close public hearing and... Okay, great. Motion second, discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right, the pass unanimously. We'll move now to public hearing two. Public hearing and possible motion regarding amendments to the thoroughfare and collector street map, street plan map in the vicinity of Cash Corporate Center. Shannon Cox.
Okay. So to orient you to the area, the amendments are related to Cash Corporate Center, if I can find my mouse. I always struggle with this. Here it is. The Certified Economic Development Site, it's this large rectangular parcel situated between East Williams Street and 1010 Road. The proposed amendments are related to the anticipated pattern of development of the Cash Corporate Center site. The first is a request from the developer, which is to remove this future local connection that would extend between the extension of Burma Drive and the extension of Production Drive. As a reminder, local connectors are typically constructed to residential street standards. In a, in a commercial area, they could even be through a parking lot. There is an agreement in place for the construction of pristine water, the minor collector, between Burma Drive and Production Drive. So now that we know this, we'll move forward. You know, we can be supportive of the removal of the local connector. There was also a developer request to remove the future north-south minor collector street. The request was really within the Cash Corporate Center boundaries. However, staff are recommending that we go ahead and remove the minor collector street all the way up to Classic Road, and then also remove the future minor collector street that would extend over to Lufkin. There's a few reasons for that. These roadways would impact additional property. This north-south collector would cross both an electric utility and the pipeline in this location. And there is progress on the eventual construction of both Burma Drive and Production Drive. So staff, planning staff recommendation is to support the removal of these roadways as shown. This was reviewed with staff from Public Works and Transportation, Administration, Economic Development, Parks, Rec and Cultural Resources, Police and Fire. There were no concerns about these amendments. The fire chief did convey that there is still a priority to improve emergency access to this basin. However, the fire department is continuing to focus on Jesse Drive, which is south of production and would connect via production. So again, no concerns about the amendments as shown. The planning board also unanimously recommended approval of the amendments at their June 14th meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions? Hearing none. All right, we move to open up the public hearing for comments. No sign up, closed public hearing. Matters with council?
Make motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right, the pass unanimously. We move now to public hearing three. Public hearing and possible motion to approve rezoning application 21CZ03.
Good evening, everyone. The case before you is the Willow Hills Putt Amendment. Just to give you a general idea of where we are, we're over here on almost the westernmost side of the town's jurisdiction at the intersection of New Hill Holloman, sorry, New Hill Olive Chapel Road at that point, and Olive Chapel Road. You all saw this case in 2018. This was a rezoning that was approved at that time. We just have to bring a putt amendment forward because of a zoning, because of an issue that was discovered during construction. Nothing else is changing. This is just a proposal concerning sidewalk locations, and so it's staying consistent with the 2045 land use map. The applicant's requesting that the following language be removed. Five-foot sidewalks shall be constructed along both thoroughfare frontages. Five-foot sidewalks shall be extended off-site from both thoroughfare frontages to intersect at the corner of Olive Chapel Road and New Hill Olive Chapel Road. Instead, they're proposing the language at the bottom, which is that a five-foot sidewalk shall be constructed along the internal property line shared with the cemetery. The sidewalk shall be located between the 10-foot type B landscape buffer and the historic house. It should be located within a 12-foot public access easement on HOA-owned common area. And a metal hoop and picket-style fence shall be installed approximately a foot off the sidewalk on the side closest to the historic house. Between the historic house and the fence, a continuous evergreen hedge shall be planted. What happened was that when we, when the applicant and the developer just went to stake everything and get it surveyed to install this sidewalk, we found a lot, we found several 19th century graves in the right-of-way. At one point, and this church has been there for a very, very long time, the cemetery has been there for an equally long time. At one point, the road was probably just wide enough for two carriages to get down if it was that wide. And so nobody had a really great idea of where right-of-way was when you were burying great-great-grandpa in the cemetery. Well, when we get out there, we find that there are headstones from the 1830s out there. No one wanted to disturb those. The town didn't want anyone to disturb those. The applicant didn't want to disturb them. So what we worked out in conjunction with Capitol Area Preservation is instead of looping around like we originally showed, it'll be coming down through here and meeting up with the sidewalk that's already installed along the frontage of the project. Staff recommends approval... Um, staff recommends approval. We think that this is the best option and it's going to be reasonable and in public interest because it, it still provides that public pedestrian connection while preserving those historic graves. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant is also here as well.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Mayo?
I have a couple. So after the preservation of that old house, this was my favorite part of the development when I voted yes for this, that having, the ability to have that sidewalk all lay around. So, um, how are pedestrians supposed to go north?
Well, right now there's no sidewalk on the north side.
Right.
And there's no sidewalk on, I'm going to go back to my aerial here. Um, I might, maybe I can zoom in. No, it's not letting me.
Maybe I should rephrase. How is it supposed to go north in the future without that there?
That's a good question and that will, at this point, I don't know that we have a specific plan laid out. Generally speaking, when we're looking at sidewalk connections and road crossings, we're doing that when we have sidewalk on the other side to connect. So as the opposed, the developments on the other side develop, we'll be working that out with them. Um, we'll make sure, Russell's here to answer any specific questions you have as far as spacing and that kind of thing. Um, but we'll make sure that they meet all the regu, all the relevant safety standards, including possibilities like Hy-Vis, crosswalks and that kind of thing. It's just that at this particular moment, we don't have a plan in front of us, so we don't have a way to make those determinations just yet.
So Hy-Vis crosswalk maybe toward the middle of it?
It might be raised. It might be, it, it might come, might come kind of here. It might get moved a little further back so the people who are turning aren't coming immediately up against pedestrians. At this point, we don't really know because we haven't had a, a time to sit down and study that since we don't know what the development across the street will be.
And how, how would that get built? Unless the town doing it, which may be?
Generally, unless the, unless DOT widens the road or the town has to widen the road for some reason, um, generally it would be built as part of development as the developers' frontage improvements. And they would work with staff through the plan review process to make sure that those, um, safety concerns are addressed. And we would inspect everything and make sure that, you know, that everything that we can do to make that work is done.
Okay. And, and how would a denial, it seems this is kind of a weird situation with the graves. How would denial affect this development?
They would not be able to build the sidewalk as currently shown without relocating the graves.
Relocating the graves, okay.
Mm-hmm. So it, there's not enough space in the right of way. Where did my slide go? There we go. Um, so this gray section here that I've kind of highlighted is the actual right of way on this side. They're actually having to, in order to meet the town's width standards for right, give us the ultimate right of way section for this, they've had to dedicate a significant portion of right of way here. Um, that's approximately 30 feet. We can't get that from the cemetery at the moment because they're not planning to do anything. And to be completely honest, we don't know if they will do anything in the future. So it's possible, and Russell, please tell me I'm wrong if I'm saying something wrong, but it's possible that if, that it may be preferable in the future to have kind of an off-center widening and have more encroachment on the north in order to avoid those grave, those graves in the, in the right of way and everything. Um, but that's something that we'll definitely do a lot more analysis of once we have that information in front of us and once we're looking at that situation. It's just at this point, it's not really set up to have a crosswalk to the north because there's no sidewalk there at the moment.
But there is mixed use north of that?
There is. Um, and the, and the frontage in front, along that mixed use has been built and everything. It's just that is a fairly significant chunk further up. Unfortunately, I can't, it's about right here.
Mm-hmm.
If we're talking in scale of the map.
Near sixty-four.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, let me start by saying, um, I'm not messing with no graves. I'm never going to support a project which involves relocating a grave. Um, and I'm happy to support this because we're avoiding it. That's great. Um, I'm curious though about the process.
Mm-hmm.
If, I know other municipalities in the county deal with, uh, reinterments occasionally. What is our process? And I appreciate the staff's not supporting this, but just from my own knowledge, what is the process here if someone wants to do this?
On Apex does not have a grave relocation process. If graves are relocated, they have to be done in Wake County's jurisdiction.
Okay. So potentially, uh, someone coming in with an annexation could do it first with the county and then get annexed into us?
If we had a situation come in where somebody wanted to annex a property and, and we've had this before actually, um, what's it called? Kelly. There's a, there's a development with a day, with Rainbow Daycare and, um, it's like an orthopedist and something on the intersection of Olive Chapel Road and Kelly Road.
Yeah.
Uh, if you're coming south on Kelly, it's on the right-hand side. So that one actually did have about a dozen, um, slave grades, graves on it at the time. And we actually worked with them before they were allowed to annex. They had to go through Wake County's process, um, which requires hiring an archaeologist, um, finding a place to relocate them. There is a lengthy notification process that has to happen. It has to be published in the newspapers, online and a variety of other places for a couple of months, I think. Um, and it has to go through their, Wake County Board Commissioners to get that all done and approved. Um, and so we did go through that process and it does, it can take anywhere from two to six extra months, just depending on the size of the cemetery. Most of the time when we have projects come into Apex though, they leave the cemetery where it is, add maybe a couple of parking spaces in front of it so that relatives can visit and just add a fence around it so that we don't, so that nobody has to worry about that because it is a lengthy process and it's not one that most people are particularly comfortable with. You know, polder guys comes to mind. Um, so, but, so that, that's the process that they would normally have to follow.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. Thank you. All right. We'll open up public hearing.
The applicant is here. Is this like my?
And I'm, I'm the only person signed up, I think.
Correct.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jason Baron with Morningstar Law Group. Uh, representing the applicant on this case, represented the applicant when this came through the first time. Uh, Shelley's done a, a very good job in kind of describing the situation that was discovered on the ground as this project was developing and what this, um, what these exhibits don't actually show, uh, is, is I kind of went back and when they called me up and said, "We have a problem. We have to extend a sidewalk through a grave." Uh, through a cemetery. And then I saw the picture, there's actually a picture that shows the stakes on one side of a headstone and on the other side of a headstone. Like you can literally get this image of you would have to extend a sidewalk through a headstone. I'm with Councilman Mahafee and probably polder guys because I grew up in the eighties. I, I don't like to mess with graves. Um, and, and so, you know, what, what, what you don't see here is that at some point back in the eighties, there was right of way that was dedicated, um, to DOT for Olive Chapel Road that left a portion of the cemetery actually in the right of way. And so, um, the discovery of this situation wasn't exclusively a product of widening that would be necessary in order for that extension to happen. It's actually an existing situation as of today. There are graves in the Olive Chapel right of way and that's shown on a plat, fascinating situation. But needless to say, it's not a situation that the church, uh, was super excited about resolving through a process of, of removal. And, uh, Councilman Mahafee, there's actually a state process that you have to follow that's executed at the local level related to when you encounter graves that need to be moved. Um, and I've seen it happen. Um, it, it's not the most regular process, but there is a process. Uh, Councilman Gant, the situation that would arise if this were denied is there is a condition that was offered as part of the zoning case, as you're aware, that contemplated an off-site improvement. You know, the, the developer was willing to extend the, the sidewalk in an effort to provide for, you know, consistent pedestrian activity around their site. Um, when they discovered this, when Toll Brothers discovered this, what they wanted to do is to maintain that and to be able to kind of continue to provide that consistent, you know, along the periphery of the sites so the pedestrians could continue, move around freely, uh, but do so in a way that didn't impact the grave. And so the, the solution, and we looked at a variety of solutions. One was adding a additional sidewalk into the community, which didn't make a lot of sense. So ultimately we negotiated, um, a, a, an amicable solution with Capitol Area Preservation. You know, they're, they're going to be the holders of the preservation easement for, um, for the historic home. Well, it's not a historic home, but the, the home of historic significance, I should say. Um, but this, what you see here tonight, uh, this proposal is one that Capitol Area Preservation has been heavily involved in in terms of making sure that the historic value of the home is preserved while at the same time providing pedestrian connections. And so there's some landscaping wired into that proposal, uh, or this solution that we've come up with as well as the idea that it's going to be located on HOA property. There's a wrought iron fence that's going to be constructed to provide some, um, kind of break between the sidewalk, the pedestrians, as well as the historic home. And so it's an unusual circumstance. It's not one that you could have known, anybody could have known during the zoning stage and that is, we're going to extend a sidewalk because it's, you know, it's a benefit to everybody. And then when you get on the ground and you're actually engaged in construction activity, you realize, whoops, there are graves actually in the middle of the road right now, uh, or at least in the middle of the right of way. And so that's the, kind of the, the minor modification that we're seeking to the approved PUD for this. So that's kind of all I have. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on, on how we got here and, and why we're making this request. So, thank you.
Mr. Baron?
So is there any planning for a crosswalk somewhere from, from this development, um, kind of at least in the plans when that other side develops? If it does?
Not that I'm aware of. No, sir. And it, and that's not to suggest that that's, it's not possible. It's just not something that's been on the radar of Toll Brothers, um, at least in my knowledge.
Can you clarify, are there graves in the right of way on just Olive Chapel, on New Hill Olive Chapel as well, or one or both?
The, the ones that I'm aware of are, um, are the ones that they staked here along Olive Chapel.
So it's possible, sorry to interrupt. It's possible then in the future just to extend the sidewalk north for the purposes of a crosswalk at the intersection?
I, I, I would like to say that's, the answer is yes in theory. I don't know. Just because I, I haven't seen similar survey information with respect to, but to be clear, I'm not aware of any conflicts on that side of the property. I'm definitely aware of conflicts on the Olive Chapel side.
Any other questions for Mr. Baron? Thank you, sir.
Great. Thank you all.
All right. Public comment is closed and the matter is back with council. Possible motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion?
I just want to say I probably, I was not like a rah-rah for this development. I probably would have voted against it if, if I had known this. So I'm going to vote no against this too because I don't like the leanness hanging. I think that's going to be an important pedestrian connection in the future. So I'm going to vote no on this.
I appreciate that perspective. I would just like to thank, um, the applicant and Capitol Area Preservation and staff for, for finding, um, a solution here, even if it's not regular in terms of how we usually build sidewalks. It does provide that connection and I'm, I'm hopeful that in the future, if the property that now develops, we can find that the sidewalk can just be extended straight north and we have a regular intersection there and it's just a little weird, but it's, it's better in my mind than the alternative.
Any other discussion? All right. Call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
All right. Motion passes four to one. We move now to public hearing four. And that's public hearing and possible motion regarding an amendment to the thoroughfare and collector street plan map in the vicinity of Green Level West Road. Ms. Shannon Cox.
Okay. Yes. So to orient you to the map, this is Green Level West Road. So this is the, um, very northern part of our planning jurisdiction. It's our border with the town of Cary. And this is Whimperley Road. The request is associated with the next item on your agenda, rezoning case twenty-one CZ oh-four. So our suggestion is that, um, you hold off voting until you also hear that item. The proposed amendment is to remove the future local connector that would extend across from existing Bachelor Road down to the future extension of Hawthorne Woods Road. And again, local connectors are typically residential streets. This request is because, um, survey data has now been collected. They've identified, uh, jurisdictional features, including, uh, stream buffer and wetlands in this location. Um, so instead of extending access in this location, the rezoning case is proposing access further west, which is what you'll see, um, with the next item. We did discuss this request with the town of Cary since this is on our border. Um, you know, asked if they would be concerned about losing a potential four-way full movement access in the future. Um, they did not have concerns about that at this time, given the anticipated low volume on these roadways. Planning staff can support this request. We also reviewed it with Public Works and Transportation, Police, Fire, Parks Rec and Cultural Resources, and there were no concerns about this request. And the planning board also unanimously recommended approval. I can answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I have one. Can you describe, um, what bachelor roads plans are on the Cary version of this plan? Is this, is it, is it a cul-de-sac or does it connect somewhere?
It does connect, um, I forget the roadway that it connects to, but it basically extends north and then heads east. It's called a collector on their plan. It's their lowest grade of a collector street. It's, um, very low volume. I don't actually think there's traffic data if it's that low volume. And they don't expect it to be substantial in the future. Um, so we did ask if we wanted to look at a mutual solution about realigning both roadways to avoid these environmental impacts. Um, they thought that, you know, might be a consideration further down the road if there's development, but at this time they're not ready to think about that.
Okay. Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So we'll open up public hearing for comments. No one has signed up and we're close period for comments. And you want to hold off on the vote today? Okay. So we move now to Ms. Shelley Mayo. Public hearing and possible motion to approve rezoning application twenty-one CZ zero-four.
Okay. As Shannon pointed out, we are at the very northwestern corner of the town's jurisdiction. Got Chatham County here and Cary just to the north. Um, the parcel in front of you is about sixty-one point nine acres. As you can see on the aerial, it's primarily wooded. There are, um, several outbuildings here and it's crossed by both the Cardinal and, I always forget the name of this one, both of the gas easements. Thank you. Cardinal and Colonial gas easements. To the south and east of it is Lake Castleberry with another parcel right here that has a large lot, single-family home as well. The current zoning is rural residential and the applicant is proposing to rezone to planned unit development conditional zoning. The twenty forty-five land use map designates this as low, low-density residential. It's a maximum of three dwelling units per acre. The applicant has offered a condition to cap their density at two-point-eight-nine units per acre, which gives us a maximum of a hundred and seventy-six, um, homes in this area. So with that, uh, density cap, the zoning is consistent with the twenty forty-five land use map. Um, I've done some coloring on here to make this a little bit easier to see. So we have several, so I've got the colonial, everything's tilted, so north is on this side, just letting you know. It's the only way it'll fit. So this is the colonial pipeline here. We have a, an existing farm pond here that has a fifty-foot buffer around it. We have, here are those environmental concerns that Shannon was talking about. There's a large pond on the, on the adjacent property with a, an intermittent stream and several small wetland areas. Um, we also have a longer intermittent stream going to the south connecting to a perennial. And this is the very northern edge of Lake Castleberry. So the stream buffers and, uh, pond buffers are in this kind of a tealish color. I've also picked out on here the trees that are greater than twenty-five inches in diameter. There's a lot of them. Um, these trees here at the top are about fifty-three inches in diameter, which is massive. Um, and then we have a couple of smaller thirty-fives, that kind of thing. There are more large trees over eighteen inches than what's shown. I just figured it would be easier for you to see the twenty-five inch ones instead of everything else. The applicant conducted their neighborhood meeting on February eleventh. That neighborhood meeting report is attached to your staff report. A letter of impact from Wake County Public Schools was received for this rezoning and is included in the staff report packet. Wake County Public Schools indicates that the elementary and middle schools within the current assignment area are anticipated to have insufficient capacity for future students. Um, transportation to schools outside of the assignment area should be anticipated and school expansion and construction within the next five years isn't currently anticipated to address the concerns. to address the concerns. The applicant is proposing the following uses: accessory apartment, single-family residential, greenway, recreation facility private, park active, park passive, and utility minor. Some of the highlighted conditions include that cap on residential, so the maximum of 176 residential units. They've also added a condition, says that no covenant prohibiting the accessory apartment use shall encumber the property, so no HOA should make that a covenant. And then they are offering to pay $284.10 per lot to the Apex Affordable Housing Fund to be paid at plat, based on 176 lots. That brings us to a $50,000 fee. The architectural conditions shown on the bottom of page two of your staff report are consistent with what we see in typical single-family rezonings. However, in addition, they are adding solar conduit in all of the single-family homes in order to accommodate future solar panels. Moving to page three, the proposed PUD complies with the UDO requirement for 30% of the gross project area to be provided as RCA. The applicant has shaded these in this kind of light green color. Those are generally where we expect the RCA to be at this point. That's including preservation of several streams and the existing farm pond, as well as most of the wetland areas. The applicant is also meeting the UDO as far as buffers go, with a couple of exceptions, along the southern, eastern, and, along the southern and eastern boundaries. So, here and here, they're actually exceeding what the UDO requires. In both cases, the UDO only requires a 10-foot type B buffer. Along the southern property line, they're providing a 20-foot type B buffer. Adjacent to this large lot, single-family home here, they're also providing a 20-foot buffer. And adjacent to this open space, they're providing 20 feet. However, as a part of the neighborhood meeting, the residents here shared some significant concerns about buffering and that kind of thing. So, they've increased the buffer there to a 40-foot type B buffer, which is four times what the UDO requires. This site used to be the location of the James Madison Williams House. Unfortunately, that house burned down in 2019. Wake County had adopted it as a landmark in 2015. While the house itself no longer exists, there's a number of significant features that went along with the house, including these extremely large 53-inch oaks in front. There's also an iconic stacked stone wall out in front of it, and the applicant has added a condition saying that they will maintain and preserve both the trees and the stacked stone wall. Now, this is, for the trees, this is, of course, pending evaluation of health, so, but that's the intent, is to maintain at least three of the trees and to maintain that stacked stone wall. They're actually going to preserve 200 linear feet at least of that wall. Some of the pieces of the wall have fallen over, over the years, and they're actually going to rebuild those sections to meet, to match what's currently still in good repair. The intent, as I said, is to preserve the existing pond, but that's pending an evaluation of the dam. The dam is actually located on the Chatham County side of things, but the nice thing is, this property is owned by the same person that, so both properties are owned by the same people. So, that will make it much easier to coordinate with, to do that. The project is also proposing at least two acres of open space and pocket parks. The PUD layout shows these pocket parks in these little greenish squares. These are the approximate locations of those, with a trail network that they're providing throughout the development. They've also added a condition that all homes within the community shall be located no further than 800 feet from an improved open space area, like a play lawn, trailhead, greenway, or pocket park. And they're adding conditions to include native and adaptive species, and to ensure that there will be a minimum of at least five species per type of plant, so that we can increase our biodiversity in the area. The Williams Farm PUD will be served by Town of Apex Water, Sewer, and Electrical Systems. The conceptual utility plan is shown here, so they will, they plan to connect to water and sewer here. And then Apex Electric runs down the road and also in Lake Castleberry. The ultimate design for the facilities will meet the Town of Apex master plans at subdivision plan approval. A traffic analysis has been performed as part of this PUD, which is consistent with the town's standards. Based on that, the following improvements are proposed for this development. The developer shall provide a westbound left turn lane with 50 feet of full width and appropriate deceleration length and taper on Green Level West Road at the location of the proposed public street access, which is roughly here. It's about 700 feet west of Bachelor Road. No other new points of access are proposed along Green Level West Road. The developer is responsible for any necessary roadway improvements to meet or exceed required site distance at the proposed location, subject to DOT review and approval. The Apex Environmental Advisory Board held a pre-application meeting for this project on February 18th. There's a list of zoning conditions suggested by the EAB. It's middle of page five of your staff report. The applicant included all of those conditions, so those are all found throughout the PUD to address those particular concerns. Parks Rec. and Cultural Resources Advisory Commission reviewed this at their March 31st meeting, and the advisory commission unanimously recommended fee and lieu. Planning board heard this at their meeting last week, June 14th, and voted unanimously to recommend approval. Planning staff recommends approval because we believe it's, it will preserve and provide many environmental features, provide funding for the Affordable Housing Fund, and permit the development of housing that's compatible to the east and south of the site. If you have any questions, I am happy to answer them for you. Before I forget, these are the lovely elevations that we've been given. The applicant is also here, and will have a statement to make afterwards, after I'm done. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you.
The applicant also has a neighbor who arrived after the sign-in sheets were taken up. He would like to make a statement once he's done with his comment.
Is, can you identify? All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Bob Zumwalt with Alliance Group. I am happy to be here. I'm in charge of design with Alliance Group. We're excited to present this case tonight. We've been working hard to create a quality community that responds to the principles that are important to Apex, that implements sustainable design practices, preserves champion trees and tree canopy, helps support more attainable housing choices, improves public safety, and makes a positive contribution to the schools, and I'll touch on all of those things. Shelley covered the land use summary. I'm not going to cover it again. She mentioned all the conditions, 30% RCA and cap in our density at 2.89, as she mentioned. The environmental features, you can see here, Shelley probably did a better job coloring than I did, but you can see where all the features are, and it's just important to note, we're not impacting any of them. All the wetlands are being preserved, and the streams, and the farm pond. The only cross, impact would be a crossing of the road to connect into Castleberry. The history of the farm is pretty interesting. The land was purchased in the late 1800s by the Williams family, and it was a tobacco farm until 1995, when the family founded the Timber Company, as Shelley mentioned. This image is a picture in 99. You can see that about half the site was cleared for farming. Then, moving forward, the land regrew as pines overtook the area that was being farmed. So, the regrowth, you can see it in dark green, and that's where we're going to try to focus the bulk of our development in these regrowth areas. Really cool pictures, interesting story how I got that one. Not enough time to talk about it, but there's some really cool cultural significance to this site. You can see the Williams family gathered in front of the farmhouse, and that iconic house that sat behind the stacked stone wall and those incredible trees. The farm did burn, farmhouse did burn in 2019, but as Shelley mentioned, we are going to preserve the trees and the stacked stone wall, and we've already been talking about how we can incorporate that look into the pocket parks and things to try to carry it through the community, to just carry that on. Before I get into some specifics, I think it's important that we understand how this site fits in the context of this green level growth corridor. The Green Level West Road, you can see it heavy dash line, is a four-lane divided thoroughfare. And the purple highlight that I put down the road, we're calling that the growth corridor. As you can see, there's quite a bit of density planned for this area. It will include a major medical campus for Duke, 250-bed hospital, three-quarters of a million square feet of office space, commercial space, a hotel, up to, close to 2,200 apartments in that corridor, a Publix grocery store, and then just multiple other communities, including some office, and some townhomes, and some single-family. We anticipate green level will ultimately carry a lot of traffic over 2540. It provides easy access to 540 and then throughout the triangle. You can see some of the travel times, four minutes to 540, 12 minutes to Apple, I can't believe we're starting to put that in slides, and 15 minutes to RDU. Another thing that was, we felt was important is to try to help the situation with green level. You can see the green level road alignment at the, on the screen there. If you've ever driven that road, it's a sharp corner, and it's, there's a hump in the roads. It's a little hard to see. So, we think it's important to work on that realignment and to soften the curve. So, we're going to be, as part of our project, rebuilding over 1,000 feet of that road to soften that curve, pull the road away from the trees, so that we can save those trees and the stone wall. Working with our neighbors has been a great experience in this, this project so far, and as I mentioned, we have somebody here who's going to speak. But we did have multiple meetings in addition to the required neighborhood meeting, and we went out and we actually staked the limits of our development, so that the neighbor could see, you know, where would the houses be. And there were a lot of positive changes that came from those meetings. You can see them on the right. We removed townhomes. They were originally in the proposal. We increased the buffer widths from 10 to 40 feet. We removed all the lots and ponds adjacent to Castleberry. And then we further, we further increased the natural area, the undisturbed areas, to an average of 200 feet adjacent to their project. So, it's been a good experience working with the neighbors from Castleberry. Just to hit a couple of highlights on design features, hopefully those things are kind of on top of each other on my screen. I hope they're not on yours. Some of the key design features that we want to highlight, the preservation of those champion trees, you can see them in the upper right corner, clustering the lots, so that we can provide more open space, the 30% RCA, and then 1,800 feet of walking trails, two acres of open space, and then all the homes located within 800 feet of an open space feature, which is key. I think people can get out of their house and get easily to some sort of open space feature. You can see the yellow areas is where we're focusing the development, and it's in, mostly in those areas that are the pine regrowth. As Shelley mentioned, we've got a lot of environmental conditions. I won't go through them all, but they're on the screen here. We did incorporate all the things requested by the EAB, but the key things, I think, are the stone walls, the stormwater measures, signage, you know, the biodiversity of the plants and the native plants, the solar conduit, and the full cutoff lighting, I think are important, and I think they're the reasons we got unanimous approval at both EAB and the planning board. By clustering the homes on the smaller lots, we're able to make these environmental commitments. We believe this style of development helps fulfill some of the goals the town is looking for, the preservation of open space, champion trees, and contiguous tree canopy, protecting environmental features, providing connected walking trails, and offering more attainable housing choices. We do have some conditions related to architecture that I won't go into. They're in, in our packet. But I will point out, because we think it's important, as I know Apex does, we will be offering multiple floor plans in these homes that have a master down, and all of the master downs could be designed to have accessible flush entrances, if that's what they choose. And so, I think that is important. People have talked to us about how important it is, and we agree, so. While these commitments will ensure that our community is walkable and connected, we also want to create a community that's more attainable for Apex residents. So, how can we make things more attainable? We think that through a combination of smaller lots and increased density, that this combination results in more open space, and it results in more attainable home prices. We're pleased, as Shelley mentioned, to offer a $50,000 contribution to the Apex Affordable Housing Fund as well. Given the site's location in this growth corridor that we just saw, our goal here was to provide superior buffers with the highest quality homes on smaller lots at a substantially lower price than the homes that are immediately surrounding us, is what we were trying to accomplish. Finally, I want to acknowledge the growing concern for school capacity. Living in our region has many benefits, but we're also trying to stay ahead of the influx of residents, and we, we are fighting against the cost of land and the availability of land. Some of you may recall, back in May, I attended the, the planning committee work session to understand the challenges that Apex is facing. And after we, after I left that meeting, I had some discussions with Amanda and staff to better understand kind of what, how we could help. And so, we went to work after that, and thanks to our roots in the community, we've identified several potential school sites in Western Apex and Cary for consideration. Because of our immediate effort and the longtime stakeholder interests, we have secured a viable site in Apex, which we are confident will help alleviate much of the current burden. We can't talk a lot about all the details for reasons that I'm sure you understand, but the property is under contract, and all the indications we're getting is that they're headed toward a successful outcome. So, while we believe our project does kind of stand alone on the commitments we're making, we also didn't want to just show up here and just ask for an approval without trying to do something to help that situation. In closing, just to summarize, I feel like we have collaborated well with our neighbors. We've preserved environmental and culturally significant features. We have preserved champion trees and canopy. We did our best to help secure a Wake County school site, and then we've made significant contributions to safety, and that's realignment of Green Level West Road, and then made commitments to site design, architecture, environmental protection, housing attainability, and affordable housing. It's been a fun project, and we would love to have your support, and I thank you for your time, and I think our neighbors here, if you want to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for public comments, and if you would come up and give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Sure. And thank you for letting me speak. This is my first time at one of these, so I was not aware that I needed to register. My name is Shirley Diefenbach, and my address is 3208 Devon Press Court in Apex, and so I live within the Lake Castleberry neighborhood. And I thought it was important for me to come today, because my property is that triangle property that directly adjoins the Williams Farm land. And wanted to give you a little bit of background. I, my husband and I built our home only a few months ago. So, we closed on February 18th, closed our, our dream home, and a week before that, we got notice that the proponents were looking to develop the property adjoining our land. So, as you can imagine, we were incredibly nervous about that and what that might look like, and we did attend the February 11th community meeting, and were incredibly impressed by the commitments that Alliance Group has made. When they say they collaborated with the neighbors, they have, and they continue to. We actually have another meeting on Thursday with them. They, Bob and Jacob came to my home and offered to walk the property with me, so that I could see where homes would be built. As they mentioned, they increased the buffer between our property and where homes would be built to 40 feet from the initial 20 feet. And, and I don't just live in the neighborhood, but I have two children that go to White Oak and Mills Park, both schools that are capped. I drive on Green Level West to work every day during that, that very steep turn where their neighborhood is going to open. And from what I've gathered and from what information they've shared with me, as a homeowner and as someone who, you know, the property will be developed at some point, and I think as a homeowner, my ask is that whoever develops it takes into consideration neighbors and the environment and the... neighbors and the environment and the schooling and the public safety of the roads. And I think they've addressed that. And so, I just, you know, as a homeowner that is directly impacted by the build, I'm one of the only homes that is actually adjacent to this, to this land. I just wanted to compliment them and support them in, in their asking for approval, and that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. With that, we'll close public hearing for comments and go back to public hearing four. There's any more discussion before we vote?
I think we should, Mr. Mayor, take the vote on the rezoning first, because I think the transportation plan.
Correct. All right, so we'll, we'll take a vote on public hearing five.
I just have a comment. Did you have a comment, Mr. Mahaffey?
I'll go right ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to thank the applicant for all the work that's been done and for all the collaboration that's been done. I appreciate that, as well as the conditions being offered. Wanted to ask staff, in terms of his description of potential school issues, is staff aware of that? Do we have any timeframe on when we might know something for sure about potential school issues?
Until the school, we typically don't receive information about potential school sites until the school board has voted to proceed. My understanding is they are close to that, but they haven't gotten there yet. Until they get to that point, the school board doesn't tend to let staff know what sites they're looking at and that kind of thing. It's possible Diane or Amanda has more informa, nope, they don't. Just got the, so, I have been advised that it's with, the applicant advised me it is within Apex's jurisdiction, it's on the western side of town, so it could conceivably alleviate some of our concerns. Anything more than that, though, I, I don't know. My guess is that, and this is purely a guess, so, don't quote me on it, please, but my guess is that once the school system has a site, considering how heavily restricted are some of our schools are, that they will start to move fairly quickly afterwards. We've been told by a couple of people in the school system that they are just having trouble finding sites. So, if Bob was able to find them a site, then that would be fantastic. That's one of the hardest parts that they have to deal with.
So, just a comment to my colleagues, you all know that in April, we continued a case, you know, for about six months in hopes that the schools, to give the school system more time to potentially find some school sites. And I'm curious, would a short continuance be appropriate for this case? I'm much more comfortable making a decision on this application knowing we have something, you know, official from the school system, which we don't now. And I'm curious what you all think about that. And I'm curious what the applicant might think of that.
I have one tiny interjection to make real quick that has, that is not directly in response to your comment. In order for this to follow the appropriate process, you actually have to vote on the transportation plan amendment first. So, you all are welcome to continue your conversation as you're doing, but when we actually get to the vote, if the PUD plan is not technically in compliance with the land, with the transportation plan, unless we take that bachelor extension off first. So, it's just a one and the other kind of thing.
Will you vote by one motion?
If, I think as long as it is specifically enumerated, that you are doing each thing and that the motion says, you know, approval for the traffic plan amendment and approval for the rezoning, then yes.
So, in answer to your question, I think these are two different situations to me. So, I would, I'm looking at this one based on what I'm looking at and not really thinking about the situation with the other. I think it's very different.
Well, the only thing that's similar is we have an insufficient school capacity impact letter.
Right. But what I'm saying is, but the information that we have that's put on the record by the applicant is something that was not a part of the other. So, I think it's two different things.
Any other thoughts? I just raise it?
Apple's not stopping, for what it's worth. They're gonna, they're gonna build, and they're gonna have people, they're gonna want homes, regardless of what we do. So, I just, there's a tide coming that we can be drowned by or try to embrace a little bit. I like this development. I think the walkability is just one of the best I've seen, so, I'm ready, I'm ready to proceed personally.
I would say that I also like this development. I, I think there's a lot that it offers that we haven't seen from others. The, the working with the adjacent landowners and, you know, the environmental advisory board is something we don't see often, you know, the conversation, the dialogue. However, the, the school capacity issue is pretty major. I would agree with Councilmember Stallings that continuing it for a short time, having a, you know, a definite, you know, moving forward from the school board level on something would make me feel a lot more comfortable with this, so.
I concur with Councilmember Stallings and Councilmember Killingsworth. I believe this development is a fantastic piece of work. From top to bottom, there's a lot of great elements here, and I really appreciate, I'm sorry, the work hasn't gone into it. But on the point specifically, I would feel a lot more comfortable if we had that school site we're discussing on the plan in front of us in a paper, and not something that, that was, you know, is gonna happen. We've seen before, stuff might happen and then, and then can fall through, you know. We need to, we need to make a serious commitment to fix the school capacity issue. And honestly, I'm not, I don't see how we can go forward with any residential development until these issues are addressed. So, I would support a continuance until we can get more information about the site. If this gets approved and, and on the plan and, and ready to go, then I think I could support this, this plan.
I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to that. And I agree, I think this is a fabulous plan. But I, I agree with Councilmember Mahaffey and Killingsworth that the school capacity issue is, is huge to me. You all should know that by now. But I would like to have a more definite from the school system before we, before I would vote yes on this.
Is there a timeframe that we know of when we could have more information about that plan?
Jacob Anderson, Alliance Group. I guess all we can probably say this evening, we maybe anticipated this could potentially happen, so we spoke to staff earlier. If there's any way that we can be continued to July 27th, I think we'll be in shape.
All right. Mr. Mayor?
July 27th is still enough, isn't it?
Fine. It's gonna work.
Okay. All right.
All right, Mayor, I would move that we continue public hearing four, the transportation changes, and public hearing five regarding rezoning Williams Farm PUD to July 27th.
Motion second.
Any further discussion on it? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
All right. Motion carries, four to one. All right, with that, we're going to take a 10-minute bio break. 7:40.
Or Kelly Road. The properties are located in this general area in our, in our ETJ. The subject properties are a total of 19.424 acres, located south of Holland Road, west of Kelly Road, and north of South Winds Run. The properties currently have residential structures, as well as streams that bisect the properties, including some heavy wooded areas. The properties are currently zoned rural residential, with the corner area is rural agricultural. The adjacent zoning is such the north rural residential and rural agricultural. And to the east, we have rural agriculture and planning and development conditional zoning associated with West Village. And to the south, we have rural residential, as well as planning and development conditional zoning, which is associated to West Village as well. And then to the west, we have rural residential. The applicant is proposing to rezone the properties to medium density conditional zoning. The 2045 land use map identifies this as medium density residential. The proposed rezoning to medium density conditional zoning is consistent with that land use classification. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on March 30th, 2021, and a copy of the neighborhood reported in your pocket. Please note that the property located at 2508 South Winds Run was included in the neighborhood meeting, but are no longer included in the proposed rezoning. A full list of the proposed uses and zoning conditions can be found on page two of the staff report. As you might see, there is a new staff report on page, I believe, two and three, or three and four of the proposed zoning conditions that have been updated since the original staff report went out, so if you'd like to follow along. A full list of proposed uses and zoning conditions can be found on page two of the staff report. The applicant is proposing single-family, utility minor, greenway, recreation facility private, and accessory apartment. The environmental advisory board held a pre-application meeting for this rezoning on March 18th, 2021. The suggestions from the environmental advisory board can be found on page three of the staff report. There are a total of 11 suggested conditions from the EAB, and the applicant has reflected nine out of the 11 suggestions. The two that were not added were in reference to preserve tree canopy within all buffers and perimeter boundaries. The response is that preservation of trees within required perimeter buffers and other RCA areas is already required per UDO. The second is areas outside of the new construction will be preserved to maintain native habitat systems. The response is it will meet UDO requirements to provide 30% of RCA or 35% of RCA if subdivision is masqueraded. To provide a summary of additional zoning conditions, the first one is the development shall have a maximum of 45 single-family residential lots and a maximum density of 2.32 dwelling units per acre. The proposed minimum setbacks for the single-family residential lots shall be the front 20 feet, rear 20 feet, side 5 feet, and corner side 10 feet. Number nine are the typical architectural conditions that we typically see for single-family residential. Number 12, any cul-de-sac that is accessed from South Winds Run shall not be subject to UDO section 7.2.1.G.3. Number 13, the developer shall contribute $250 per single-family lot to the Town of Apex Affordable Housing Fund. Contributions to be paid at time of plat. And now for the ones that have recently been added, that are at your seat, is zoning conditions 14 to 19. And I will be happy to go over them for you. Number 14, the proposed vehicular site access from South Winds Run shall be located no more than 400 feet from the Kelly Road and South Winds Run intersection. The development shall have a maximum of 20 single-family residential lots with vehicular access to South Winds Run. Number 16, single-family dwellings shall be a minimum, shall be setback a minimum of 40 feet from the existing right-of-way on South Winds Run. Number 17, a six-foot tall opaque fence shall be provided within the required 20-foot wide buffer along the property boundary abutting the parcel identified as, as this property. A six-foot tall opaque fence shall be provided along the portion of the property abutting the existing right-of-way line of South Winds Run and outside of any public utility easement, and includes supplemental plantings consistent of at least 75% evergreen species. The fence and planting bed shall be provided within HOA common areas. And number 19, the, the development shall provide a sidewalk along the portion of the property abutting the existing right-of-way line of South Winds Run. A lot of impact from Wake County Public School System was received for this rezoning and is included in the staff report. Wake County Public School System indicates that schools at elementary and high school grade levels within the current assignment area for the proposed rezoning and development are anticipated to have insufficient capacity for future students' transportation to schools outside of current assignment. School expansion or construction within the next five years may address, address concerns at the high school grade levels. Approval of the zoning is reasonable because the proposed medium-density residential conditional zoning district is consistent with the 2045 land use plan. The 2045 land use map classifies the subject property as medium-density residential, which is consistent with this proposed zoning district. The proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it permits single-family residential development consistent compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed rezoning will maintain the character and appearance of the area and provide the flexibility to accommodate the growth in population, economy, and infrastructure consistent with that contemplated by the 2045 land use map. The planning board held a public hearing on June 14th, 2021, and voted to recommend approval with the conditions as offered by the applicant by a vote of seven to one. The planning board also included a note to Town Council that expressed concerns about whether subleasing is prohibited, needed for additional screening along South Winds Run, and addressing neighbors' concerns for a financial contribution to help them connect to water in the future if desired. Planning staff can recommend approval with the conditions as offered by the applicant. I'll be able, happy to answer any questions, as well as our applicant in the audience.
The planning board member that said no, what was their reasoning?
It was regarding the note, but also with the capacity for the school system, and I believe with the renting versus subleasing.
We got some feedback, I think, via email about how it's a little bit irregular when a cul-de-sac road like South Winds Run is, is used as an, as an entrance to a neighborhood like this with much higher density. Are there examples like that in Apex besides what they're proposing here as far as a, yeah, a road that cul-de-sacs, maybe large lots or whatever, but is also the entrance to a, a neighborhood like this? And I was thinking about, back where I live in Asheville, we had a road kind of like this where I lived on, and, and I was thinking about, would it be weird to have an entrance to the neighborhood off the road I was living on? And it would have been, it would have been, it would have been kind of strange. Aside from, my wife and I were just kind of discussing, would it have been irregular? And the answer was yes. So, is this, had this happened in Apex, other places?
Obviously, not since I've been here, but I can ask Russell if he, for a transportation perspective, if he remembers.
I can't think of one off the top of my head where it's a cul-de-sac, where it's, there's an entrance proposed, where it's the only entrance. I can't think of examples where we've had connections to cul-de-sac neighborhoods like Castlewood off US 64, Chapel Ridge Road, where we had Hempstead connected. So, we do have examples of large lot cul-de-sac neighborhoods where there have been connections from other development.
Okay. But, but, okay.
Yeah, so, so if this, if this development, we're actually proposing a connection to South Winds Run and Holland Road, also with a connection across the creek, so connecting everything together, that would be more typical of development. The thing that I would consider atypical is the fact that there's a stream buffer running through the middle, and there, there's a recommendation not to connect across the stream in this case.
Okay, thanks. Hey, Russell, before, sorry, before you start down, is there a technical reason why they can't connect to Kelly Road? I know sometimes we hear about distances from other intersections, and that comes up a lot when these questions are asked.
They could potentially connect to Kelly Road, but if they did, it would only be a right-in, right-out based on the location. And our UDO prohibits a sole connection from a subdivision based on that. And the language in the UDO is somewhat unclear, and the applicant didn't bring that up with us. But the understanding is, the way it's worded is if, if they go beyond 50 units, you have to have two points of access, and one of those has to be full movement. So, our interpretation of that and our meaning of that is that if you only have one point of access, that needs to be full movement. Part of that is because of emergency response, being able to get in and out of a neighborhood and not be restricted to like a right-in, right-out or crossover, limiting movements. The other is, of course, that if you only have right-in, right-out movement to a subdivision, develop, you know, traffic trying to get in and out of subdivision are gonna make all kinds of crazy maneuvers to avoid that, like turning around, making awkward maneuvers that could jeopardize safety, no matter what kind of islands we try to put in place.
Is that, is that, is that West Village across the way? Is that a right-in, right-out as well?
It is, and it also has connectivity through the, through West Village to the south to a full movement, so there is another point of access. So, in this case, you know, they could propose, you know, right-in, right access, right-in, right-out access to Kelly. We might be able to support that, DOT might be able to approve that. But we would also recommend connectivity to South Winds Run to, to get their full movement in that case. recommend connectivity to South Winds Run to get their full movement in that case.
Thank you.
No other questions?
I don't know if the applicant or you might want to speak to the water issue from the residence, because I heard, we all might have gotten the same emails, several people were concerned about the access being on South Winds Run, and a number of people were concerned about water and well impact. If anyone can speak to that.
I'd probably let the applicant speak to that, since they've been working with the neighbors, just I don't want to misspeak for that.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Emily Rothrock. I'm a landscape architect with ESP Associates, and with me tonight is Stephen Freeman. He's the applicant. I also have with me Adam Ashfall. He's with ESP Associates as well. Going to pull up a presentation here. So, I'd like to go through this and explain some of the conditions of the site and speak to the process we've gone through, as well as specifically some of your questions regarding neighbor concerns and our approach to addressing those. I'm going to skip over some of the stuff that Lauren has included, but again, this is including two parcels, where south of Holland Road, west of Kelly Road, and north of South Winds Run. This is the current zoning Lauren went over, and the request to rezone for consistency with the future comprehensive plan to medium-density residential. Medium density allows for a maximum of six units per acre. The request here is to set a maximum of 2.32 density units per acre, 45 single-family detached residential lots. You can see on this diagram here, I'm going to start to talk about different features, but as I go through some of these elements, I'll be able to address some of the concerns and questions we got from neighbors and how we're proposing to accommodate and work with those as best as we can. So, as part of this application and as part of the future requirements of this project, there is required to be right-of-way dedication on Holland Road and Kelly Road. We're proposing to dedicate the 10-foot for the full right-of-way width on our half of the road as part of Holland Road. We're proposing to dedicate the required 25-foot width right-of-way along Kelly Road for the future build-out of Kelly Road. And as South Winds Run exists right now, this actually has a larger right-of-way than what is required at 75 feet versus the required 50 feet. There is no dedication required and no future expansion proposed of, or width widening of this section of Kelly. We did a little bit of investigation. We're not sure as to how this came about and why this is at 75-feet situation than you would normally see for development. There's also a 30-foot-wide sewer easement that's been developed here, and that prohibits some development within that site. So, what we've located here are two developable areas, one on the north and one on the south. In looking at the code and in looking at what we can work with and coordination with staff, it is possible, when environmental features, topography, other items exist on your site that don't allow for a feasible connection or an appropriate connection, that you could provide a connection within the development through a pedestrian path. So, we're proposing that the existing driveway be utilized as an enhanced and renovated as part of this development into a pedestrian trail. We've got an access shown for the north part of this parcel off of Holland Road and an access for vehicles shown off of South Winds Run for the south part of this proposed development. So, we've gone through some coordination with EAB, and as Lauren mentioned, we've incorporated all of the enforceable conditions and made sure that those were part of the consideration of this project. We had our original neighborhood meeting. We received some direct inquiries from additional neighbors, as well as some forwarded on from staff, and so we reached out to those neighbors and had another meeting with them last week immediately following planning board. And so, we wanted to learn what additional requests were being made and what they might be concerned about and what some of their thoughts were on how we could accommodate those. We've also had some preliminary evaluation of the environmental features on site, so as we're considering this, we're really thinking about what impact a development would have, how to protect that feature, as well as, you know, some of the requests for, why are we, why are we keeping this connected with just a pedestrian connection? And so, we believe that for this site and for the conditions, this is a really good consideration, and we think that, you know, as we talk through this, this environmental feature can actually be a really nice asset for this community. So, most of the comments and items of discussion we got from neighbors fall into a couple of different categories, and I'll try to address those. We've got concerns about traffic and that might impact the existing South Winds Run, West Wind community. We have a couple of concerns about walkability and safety, water connection, support, and then screening and buffering. So, as I mentioned, the access off of South Winds Run is the proposed point of connection at this time. We evaluated the existing intersections of Holland Road and South Winds Run with Kelly Road. They are designed based on NC DOT requirements. Holland Road, Kelly Road, and South Winds Run are all NC DOT roads. So, with the 1,200-foot distance between them, as Russell mentioned, we would have to have a right-in, right-out based on the future median-divided road section of Kelly. So, if we were to make a connection on Kelly, we would have to make significant impact to this environmental feature to cross the stream. We have about 400-plus acres of drainage area coming to this site. It would require a very large culvert. It would require very large width of grading and disruption to that existing vegetation and feature there. So, in terms of providing connectivity, we have some conditions that address that pedestrian path, and we're also addressing the concerns about traffic and walkability as best we can. We've proposed a condition, you'll see number 14, this is consistent with the adjacent development. This would help to alleviate any concerns about headlights into homes across the road, and it would limit the amount of traffic that would come any further down into that site connection. We've also limited the maximum number of units to 20 single-family lots in order to try to reduce as much as possible that concern. And the applicant is also willing to provide, instead of a fee-in- lieu option, the half of South Winds Run adjacent to the parcel, the sidewalk connection and associated connections there. So, as neighbors come out of the West Winds neighborhood and take a walk or approach Kelly Road, they'll have a safe place to navigate on a sidewalk and turn around and go back The water connection was an issue. As part of this project, there is a requirement to connect to the 20-inch transmission line across from Kelly Road, so there will also be a connection to the stub that's coming from the West Village project to the south. So, we'll have that connection proposed and that accessible for the neighbors in the future. We did talk with them, there's no immediate need, or they're not requesting a connection at this time. The property boundaries and screening, we are providing the required 30-foot perimeter buffers along Holland and Kelly Road. We're also providing the required 20-foot buffer adjacent to parcel identified earlier. Applicants also agreed to include an opaque six-foot-high fence there to alleviate concerns from that parcel. In studying the site requirements, you know, with the water easement that's required to connect to Kelly Road, there are impacts to the ability to the developable area from both the right-of-way and that environmental feature. So, while we do hear a lot of the neighbors' concerns about providing a 40-foot-wide buffer or something more substantial there, we're not, we don't feel that that is an appropriate approach and a reasonable commitment at this time, based on this project's constraints.
We're out of time.
Okay, okay, so.
You say you're speaking for Stephen and Adam.
Stephen signed up to speak separately for AMH Development. Yes, thank you.
I'm really, it's my time.
Okay, thank you.
I think if you have any further questions on this, I'll be happy to answer them and how we're addressing that.
All right, any questions for the applicant?
I'm up.
Yeah, one sec. Any questions? Okay.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Stephen Freeman with AMH Development, we're the applicant. Just to continue on that conversation, I'll first just take a couple of moments to give you a little bit of overview about who we are and what we do, so you totally understand our program and concept as well. AMH Development, we're an internal subsidiary of American Homes for Rent. We're a national developer of purpose-built, single-family homes, detached homes that are available as a rental option for consumers. You know, as a company, integrated, so we are the land acquisition group, we are the developer, we are the construction company, and we are the leasing company, operations company, maintenance company for the community. All our homes are designed to meet energy efficiencies, built with premium product because we do invest for long-term. We don't have an exit strategy. Homes are platted individually, built just like recently what we developed, basically. All homes are built with hardy siding and brick or stone. They all have exterior, I'm sorry, on the interior, upgraded features such as granite stainless on the exteriors. Every home is 100% sodded, and exterior of the home as well, lawn maintenance, upkeep, roof, et cetera, within the community. Again, a few images of what we develop, and again, very comparable. And again, we worked with the EAB and planning staff to meet the appropriate design commitments and architectural commitments. In addition, we did have a question at the planning board about a master-on-the-main option. That's something we do provide, and we'd be happy to provide that as well within the community. You know, we think this is a great site and location and opportunity to provide something new to the community, needed in the community, something that's environmentally sustainable, something that's affordable, and something that can really provide a positive contribution to the community. Our typical consumers, you know, are those that are empty nesters, those that are downsizing, those that are new to the area, those that may be relocating for a job to the area, those that might have a change in personal family status, those that are saving for a down payment. They might easily qualify from a mortgage perspective in terms of being able to afford the payment, but just don't have the capital available, so this is a unique opportunity. For us, the average tenure is over three years, so that's something as well. There was a concern, a question raised at planning about any potential sublease scenario, and I've got language from our lease, I won't read the whole section, but the final sentence of the particular section is, "An assignment or sublease of this lease without landlord's written consent is immediately voidable." So, it's something we police and something we manage as part of our vetting process. We have a very stringent vetting process. In terms of the conditions, and I'll just scroll back up to that, at least that one image. Again, we met with homeowners and adjacent property owners at the first meeting in March. We heard follow-up through staff, which led us to have another meeting prior to the planning board, and then we had subsequent conversations following the planning board as well, and believe that we meet really the four main concerns of traffic, buffering, walkability, and the water well scenario. As Emily indicated, we have proposed now and conditioned a six-foot fence that would run basically the full length of the south boundary, not just immediately in front of the road where it separates, but a continuous buffer available on the south edge. An entrance, again, keeping it as close as we can to Kelly Road to avoid impacts to the neighbors as the road curves to the west and south. Max density of the units on the south side, and a commitment for the sidewalk and curb and gutter as part of the development. So, again, there's a safe opportunity for those folks that are coming down the road for a walk that they can step onto the sidewalk and continue their walk safely, even as we propose public streets, sidewalks into the neighborhood, and potentially continuing on their path of walkability into the greenway area. We did have, it just didn't come up in conversation, conversations with planning board staff, or planning staff, I'm sorry, about a potential future linear east-west greenway connection. That's something we'd be open to allowing as a future, there's no connectivity planned at this point, as I understand, but that was a topic that we did talk about. And the last item, there was a request beyond just the upgrade water capacity of maybe some additional recourse to help the neighbors with the water connectivity issues, should they wish to connect in the future, and similar to the West Village development, which offered a cash contribution, I understand there's some questions and concerns legally about how that was handled before and what can be addressed, and may not be able to be addressed, but we would like to propose a $10,000 contribution towards future connectivity. Again, I think staff or legal may have had some conversations about that and how that might be able to be addressed, but we're happy to provide that for the neighbors' use for future additional extension of water. Thank you. Opened any questions?
Could you speak to the length of the sidewalk again that you're proposing?
I believe this length in red noted here is right around 600 feet. And again, you know, beyond the sidewalk, there'll be plantings in between the sidewalk and the screening and a landscaped area. Thank you.
Did you say 45 residential lots? Is that what I'm hearing?
As a maximum, yes. We think we'll probably be under that, but we don't, until we continue to move forward with our site plan design, we'll know for sure.
And are you proposing four, five-bedroom houses here? Is that correct?
There's that potential, yes, in the unit mix. We offer three, four, and five-bedroom units is kind of our program.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open up public hearing for comments. First is Tim Donnelly. Mr. Tim Donnelly.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. It used to be, in the old days, I would talk to, well, DeColle was here anyway, Don, late at night, and everybody would go to sleep, so feel free. I'm used to it. Cindy and I are the property owners right here, and we're actually the only property owners in, did you work?
I'll see you later, Matt.
No, I like that one. I like that. Anyway, we're right there, and I want to thank the developer for offering the fence. Appreciate that as a condition. As you know, the way this process works, the developer meets with the neighbors, we hope they offer conditions that satisfy us, and Cindy and I really only have a couple conditions that we'd like to see, and we can be very satisfied. I'd also like to discuss, though, our neighbors, the Timberlakes and the Shards. I hope in your deliberations, not only will you consider what is best for Apex, which I know you will, but you have a widow who is burdened by her I know you will, but you have a widow who is burdened by her land, and I think she's ready to sell, because it's so big, she can't maintain it anymore. And the Sharks, they have raised their family there, and it's time for them to move on with their lives. So please consider that. I know the school system situation and all that, it makes it very complex, but Cindy and I actually hope at the end of the day that they can sell their land and develop it. And I think we're lucky that it's residential. You know, it could be commercial with all that frontage on Kelly Road, so, you know, residential's maybe not so bad. So really, the only conditions that Cindy and I would like to request are no connections of roads to South Winds Run. Right now, and I might have my location wrong, but I think there's a driveway right here. Does that seem about right? You know, that is our disturbed buffer. And I know that if you put in a culvert and, you know, build a road there, it's going to be more disturbance, and there might be some wetlands mitigation and things like that. You know, not many homes, and we walk our dogs and all those things, and Cindy and I have had horses there from time to time, and, you know, we kind of enjoy that, so we appreciate it. And then the other question about the water, a little history lesson. When West Village was developed, they could have had a requirement to build a water line all the way down this road. Instead, what we ended up with, which is far superior to us, there's a water line right here that can be extended, and $75,000 was set aside to help us with water. Saves them a lot of money, just as a suggestion. So the condition Cindy and I would like is no connection to South Winds Run, and more contribution to the water line, and we're very happy with the fence. Also, I will say one thing, they've proposed a condition exempting themselves from the 1,200-foot rule. That was for safety reasons. Fire and police don't want long cul-de-sacs where if you have an interruption in service, all those people are stuck in there. There is no reason until you have traffic studies and really know to exempt yourself from your own rules or exempt them from your own rules. It's just too early. Might be a reason at some time, but that's my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, Steve Swamp.
14.
All right. Now, I have noted here you're speaking for a group, right?
Excuse me?
Are you speaking for a group or for?
Yeah, I'm speaking for West Winds.
Okay, all right.
Got a few people in here.
Thank you.
And you should have two handouts that are there, one of them being the map that was provided, and then another piece of paper. All right. Good evening. My name is Steve Swamp, and this is my amazing wife Cynthia. We live at 2701 South Winds Run in the West Winds subdivision for nearly 24 years. Apex is special, that's why we all came here. This area of Apex has its own version of small-town look and feel. We all bought into this vision, many of us over 20 years ago, some as long as 30 years. We bought based on the 2010 land use plan, which classified the area as rural residential. We also bought based on the Tunstall family. Ed and Ruth owned the land that is now West Winds, and they always considered it and the residents as part of their family. We live in a beautiful and peaceful area. You can still see the stars at night. Everyone who visits our home remarks on how peaceful this area is. Many times, people drive by and ask if there are lots for sale nearby. They want the same vision of small-town Apex that we have. We have watched our neighborhood grow over the years. We have had children and grandchildren here. We've cared for aging parents here. We've had graduations and weddings, and we continue to do so. West Winds is one of several large lots, large lot subdivisions in Apex, and everyone who lives here in West Winds has similar desires. We all enjoy living in a peaceful, tranquil neighborhood. We also enjoy our views from our decks and porches not obstructed by our neighbors' homes. We are all just regular people who enjoy the life we have built here in Apex. We also take our role of improving our corner of Apex seriously. West Winds was deeply involved with the definition of West Village back in 2016. Our goals then are the same as now, to protect the quality of life and investment we have, to build our community, and to give back to the town to ensure that any new development will be a jewel in the crown of Apex. I'm sorry, my notes are out of order here. Today, we are here for the Kelly Woods rezoning. Unfortunately, we have not had a lot of time to prepare for this. We only found out about the rezoning three weeks ago. While the developer did hold a town meeting back in March, only two of the West Winds homeowners were notified due to their properties being within 300 feet of the development. No signs were posted on the property for the meeting, as they are not required. We only found out how far along this project was when the notification for the rezoning was developed twice in that time. The first was only me and my wife. The next week, we were able to pull a meeting together with the developer and a few residents of the neighborhood. While the development team was courteous, they would not commit to any changes, but simply to consider them. We have not come to an agreement on any of our concerns. For that reason, we would like to ask the council not to approve this development, but to postpone the rezoning. Our subdivision can only influence the developer up until the time the rezoning is granted. After that, there is no place we have a voice. We'd also like the opportunity to meet with council members to discuss our concerns. My comments are only going to focus on a couple of the issues. These are the issues that I feel are most important. There are many other concerns, such as school overcrowding, but we do not have time to discuss them all. My first issue deals with the connection of the subdivision to South Winds Run instead of Holland Road or Kelly Road. I was able to get an early map from the planning department showing the proposed layout. It's the one that you have here. The developer does have a more refined version, but this is what I had access to. As you can see in the map, the subdivision is split into two, divided by a creek. Half the units enter from Holland Road and the other half from South Winds Run. First off, I have never seen a subdivision like this, anywhere. As far as I can tell, none exists in Apex. Two groups of homes only connected by a narrow path, the length of a football field is not a subdivision, nor is it a community. If anything, it is two subdivisions. It is a mistake to divide the subdivision like this. This will at best be a divided group of homes. You live on one side of the creek or the other. We suggested that the developer, they are preserving RCA space. We are all aware of the creek. South Winds crosses a larger branch of the creek. Ms. Timberlake's driveway on the property crosses the creek. The new sewer line for West Village crosses the creek. Even the West Village entrance across from the property crosses the creek. Many subdivisions around us deal with these creeks by creating a small bridge. The developer wants to avoid the creek by tearing down trees along South Winds to create an entrance. We also suggested they move the entrance from South Winds to attach directly to Kelly Road. Their response was that it was safer to avoid a major collector. This does not make sense. The problem here is the existing property owner's driveway is in the same location as to where Kelly Roads would connect. The owner doesn't have a safety problem. West Village, in a much larger development, feels that Kelly is safe enough to connect to it in four locations. And with traffic circles planned for the Holland-Kelly interchange and near Salem Street, traffic speed in the future will be slower than today. It is already difficult for West Winds residents to make a left on Kelly due to the sharp angle of the road connection. More than doubling the traffic on this entrance would make it unsafe. We also have many people walking on our road as well as wheelchairs. Many take daily strolls with their children, walking their dogs, or just exercising. The extra traffic will cause safety issues for those of us who walk on our street. South Winds Run was originally a private road that is now maintained by the county. The asphalt is thin. It is not built to Apex standards. Do not let the developer connect to South Winds Run. If they do, Apex will soon have to pay the bill for a portion of it to be reconstructed, as this road will not tolerate increased traffic demands. It is my opinion that developers are looking to invest as little as possible to develop the property. Apex is all about community development, by widening a section of Kelly for its entrance. The second issue I want to discuss is one that I feel is more important to Apex. AMH is a subsidiary of American Homes for Rent. Once construction is complete, American Homes for Rent will control this project. Now, this is one piece that may not be 100% clear. These homes are not for sale. This is purely a rental community under control of a large corporation. There is no individual homeownership. This is an expensive apartment complex hiding as a subdivision of single-family homes. This concept is new to Apex. We have many homes that are rented out by their owners, but we do not have an entire community of corporately-owned homes. I would advise caution here. The decision that is made here will live with Apex for the future. If this is bad, it will affect many lives, and it'll be a blemish on the town and its reputation for many years. I say this because after some brief research, we found that American Homes for Rent, if you look at the second sheet, it has over 750 complaints filed with the Better Business Bureau in the past three years, over 250 in the past year alone. They have a 1.2 out of 5-star rating. You can see all this on the second handout. YouTube is full of clips from TV stations across the country with problems seen from this corporation. American Homes for Rent is a billion-dollar publicly traded company. Their success is in part due to the stock market. We have been on a climb of the stock market for the past decade. What happens when the market takes a downturn? It is one thing to deal with a bad landlord, but when that landlord is a corporation controlling 45 homes grouped closely together, well, there is going to be a large legal bill and a lot of bad press for Apex. I want to take you back to the past for a moment. Around 2016, the little grocery store chain proposed building on the land between the Walgreens and post office on William Street. Many residents came to protest, and the council determined the site was not a good fit. And we feel that a corporate rental community is a bad fit for Apex, especially when so many young families are looking for homeownership. So many people want to invest their lives here in Apex. They want to anchor here and put skin in the game and purchase homes here. The rent demanded for these homes is not affordable. Most homes in Apex only stay on the market for a few days. People want to own property. Apex is a great place to live, as we all know. It is your decision how we further that vision. Thank you for your time and service to the community.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I need to address something that was just said and make sure that the council is aware that homeownership is an unconstitutional requirement. It's an impermissible regulation with regard to land use. So whether these are rentals or owner-occupied is not relevant to the land use decision before you.
Thank you.
Doesn't change their rating with the Better Business Bureau.
Thank you, Mrs. Swamp. Wayne Weaver.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. Are we there yet? He's ready for dinner and a cocktail. So Wayne Weaver, 2708 South Winds Run. My wife and family and I have been here since 98, and definitely consider it home. Clearly, you've heard from my neighbors and probably several people in Apex before leading up to the meeting, so I'm not going to relitigate and rehash everything they've said. Just I'll be as brief as I can. Clearly, for me and several of my neighbors, this is not about our neighbor's right to sell their land, or somebody to come in and build a product and sell it and make a profit. You know, they have every right to do that, and that's not something that, one, I think is going to stop, and, two, that I think we should stop. It's just the nature of development in towns across America. But what we will do is fight tooth and nail for what is left or what is built when everybody moves out and the builder or developer leaves, because we want the best possible product we can have for our families and for our little piece of Apex heaven, because that's what we all consider. I know most of you have probably been down there, and it is an extremely unique place. I've talked to Terry. Very, the views I get when I come into South Winds Run, and I know I'm home, coming back from a trip from who knows where, and I'm on South Winds Run, I know I'm home, I know it's quiet, it's peaceful. And quite frankly, that's the reason I moved there. It's the reason a lot of us moved there. So I would urge you to, when you make your decisions, offer us some deference, if not more than what we will to developers who I don't think are local, but deference to the community that lives here and the neighbors that live in there in terms of what our requests are, and for me primarily, it's going to be the buffers. I don't think a 40-foot buffer is unreasonable, which they just referred to a few minutes ago. I think, you know, a buffer with 100% evergreens and berms and the fence, quite frankly, would go a long way to preserving some of the beauty that we have when we're coming in and out of our neighborhood. The last piece is just going back to the school capacity, which is what postponed the last developer, who quite frankly, looks like they're best friends with their next-door neighbor, which I've never seen before. You know, if school capacity was an issue there, it is likely very much a school capacity issue here. I still have children in the school system, so I know firsthand, you know, what's going on there. So just to close, I appreciate the opportunity for us to come and talk to this and be able to do that in this community, because we all love this community, no doubt about it. And we want what's best for it. We want what's best for our peace, and quite honestly, at the same time, what's best for our largest investment. So have a good night, appreciate it, and thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weaver. All right, Dennis Schard.
Denise Schard. It happens all the time, I get called Dennis, but I'm Denise. I'm the owner of 2324 Kelly Road, so I am one of the property owners that are selling in this project here. As was mentioned earlier, Ms. Timberlake is in need of selling this property and myself as well. So at this point, our lives have changed. I have raised my family. I've separated from my husband. We're, you know, there is a need to move on and to sell the property. One of the things that I looked at and Ms. Timberlake looked at at the time that we were looking at the offers that we were getting in was what would be best for the area, what would help, you know, in this area, and, you know, not letting it be high-density in that. It is, South Winds is an amazing area to be at. But even for me, as a professional adult, if I was moving or transitioning into this area, this is exactly what I would be looking for. My moving out of here and transitioning, this is what I'm looking for, and it's not available in Apex. I've loved living here for 20-something years. You look at across the street from me and to the right of me, all the village, West Village. I didn't protest it. I know I didn't own that property when I bought my property, and I knew that eventually things were going to get developed around me. And, you know, that's where I'm at at this point, is that, you know, I understand, and I think that there was a great plan put forward here, and it's, you know, a great benefit for me to be able to have you all approve this tonight. So I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
All right, Brenda Doubleman.
Well, good evening. My name is Brenda Doubleman. I'm a totally different voice. I'm one of the brokers that's representing the property, but more than that, I am a 25-year real estate veteran that's out there fighting in this market right now for my clients. I have people relocating from California, from Florida, from all over, and guess what? There's no housing. There's no housing in Apex, in Cary, in Raleigh. So guess what we do? We want to put them in a decent rental. So I want to give you some stats, because it's staggering. Right now, in TMLS as of today, there are currently active or pending 47 town homes and single-family rentals in Apex, 47. Last year, at this same exact point in time, there were 92. That's just about over 50% drop. People are staying longer, maybe these landlords are deciding to sell. But guys, Apex needs to give the people that are relocating here a quality product, and this is that. I don't know if you've seen some of the rental products that are out there. They're sad. This is a high-end, really good-looking neighborhood, and I'm going to tell you that the average price for 1,800 square feet was $2,150 last year, still $2,150 this year. These rental prices are right in line. So we may not like what we see coming, but gosh, we need it. So as a local Realtor, I'm just asking you, please bring a variety and a product to our area that would make me proud as a real estate agent to put people in. And they're coming. They're coming whether we like it or not. They're on their way. They're here right now, and they have nowhere to live. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, last speaker for tonight on this item. Is there any other comments? Okay, all right. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing. Comment period, and it's back to council for deliberation.
I guess I'll go ahead and start, since I was here for the original, folks who were coming, and I went to the neighborhood and spoke to, I don't know, maybe 30 people in the neighborhood, and, you know, and then you all had a list, like the neighborhood had a list, and then the applicant had a list, and what I was trying to do is to try to get one list. And so, so, and so that's the background I have with the neighbors that are here tonight speaking about South Winds Run. So when I, you know, when I think about a lot of the things that were mentioned tonight and some of the concerns that I've been receiving, you know, I feel like there may be a mismatch between, you know, the product being a rental, which the applicant knows how I feel about it, with the product being a rental, and then the amount of, the amount of the rent, and perhaps maybe the location of the property with the location of people who need... So when I, you know, when I think about a lot of the things that were mentioned tonight and some of the concerns that I've been receiving, you know, I feel like there may be a mismatch between, you know, the product being a rental, which the applicant knows how I feel about it, with the product being a rental and then the amount of, the amount of the rent. And perhaps maybe the location of the property with the location of people who need to, who want to sell, and then people who are most directly impacted who are still there. So I'm not so sure that I'm comfortable with this product in this location at this time based on what I've seen. That's sort of where I am right now. I'd love to hear other people's thoughts.
I don't have a problem with the product itself. I think a rental community is needed. However, I come back to the same issue that we've talked about with development over these past several meetings is, you know, there, we're talking four- or five-bedroom homes, which means families come in with kids, which means school capacity issue. So we're back to the same issue again. We don't have the sufficient school capacity to handle the amount of kids that might be coming in with us. So I can't support it at this time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll try. I mean, I have a point of view that no one's spoken, said about yet, but it's important to me. These two parcels on the western border is a kind of a irregularly shaped parcel. And so that matters to me, because I think it'll be a difficult one to develop. Also contains, that creek continues to flow through that parcel. And on the advanced Apex Plan, there's a sidewalk, and I think they're going to build it along Holland. But that irregularly shaped parcel goes all the way to the next neighborhood. I guess Holland, Holland Crossing? Hold on. Crockett's Ridge? It's one of those, what's across the street from you, Terry? I forget the one now.
Across from me?
Yeah, where they had the greenway. Didn't matter, I guess. Doesn't matter, sorry. It connects to that neighborhood across the street, and there's a proposed Camp Branch Greenway that will connect all the way to Nature Park that's in that same area. And I'm afraid that proving this means that they're going to have this gap, 1,000 feet, is what they told me, of pedestrian non-connectivity that I believe will persist for a long time because of the way the parcel's shaped. And so if they're not going to build that, I don't think, I'm willing to proceed on this kind of development unless they bring along that parcel to the west. So I'm going to be no. And I make a motion to deny.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All right. Take a vote. All in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Further denial?
Yes.
Aye. Sorry.
Yep. Opposed, no. All right. Passing unanimously. All right, moving now to public hearing number seven. It's public hearing and possible motion regarding various amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO. Pass.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, just a minute. Okay, so we have a series of amendments for you that's related to the state's adoption of, just a brief summary. Essentially, Chapter 160D is the statutory authority for development regulations for zoning in subdivision North Carolina. And previously, cities and counties had separate statutes, 153 for the county, 160A for cities, and very similar standards, sometimes differences. So the goal was to unify that together, bring consistent language, consistent standards for cities and counties, place the statutes into a more logical, coherent organization, and provide uniform authority definitions and procedures. This change did not, does not involve major policy changes or shifts in the scope of authority, and it does modernize language in statute, so it brings forward some consensus reforms. So just to summarize, because as you've seen, you have the whole UDO attached, because almost every section article of the UDO was affected by these changes. So I've just provided out some highlights of the examples here. So, you know, as we expected, all of the section references to the whole UDO had to be translated into, from the current one to the proposed. So that was the first fun step. We had a modernizing of language and statutes. There's the addition of conflict of interest language for staff, as is similar, that applies for boards. The authority to submit applications to include a lessee or a person holding an option or contract to purchase land, so that's in addition to a property owner having the authority to submit applications. Clarifying language, and so when reviewing processes, not saying when approving blank application, it's when reviewing and taking action on an application. So there's clarifications such as that. For notices of violations, adding a requirement to also notice the landowner if that's different than the person responsible for the violation. And a change to clarify, it will be revoked by the approving authority. So whoever approved the permit, that's who has the authority to revoke the development approval. So while we have the UDO, you know, open, and I refer it as like coping art surgery at Planning Board, there were some other changes that need to be made. For instance, the Planning Department's title recently changed to Planning and Community Development. So that change is made, in addition to Planning Director's title throughout the UDO, that change, those changes are made. Currently, the UDO has a standard for public hearing procedures, which is all encompassing of legislative and quasi-judicial. And as we were working through all the changes and some of the guidance, you know, with through 160D, we felt it was best to separate those standards, so it was crystal clear what those procedures are. So we've proposed the creation of Section 2219, quasi-judicial public hearing procedures. And that's more for clarity purposes than anything, no change in procedures. We are proposing the removal, there's two references to non-structural development permit, and that permit does not exist anymore. It's been gone for a while, but the references were missed in the UDO. We did find some missing references to Section 6.3, small town character overlay, in the standards column of the use table, so adding those in. With the adoption of Advanced Apex, the 2045 Transportation Plan, we needed to update all the references to thoroughfare plan and Apex Transportation Plan to Advanced Apex. And finally, just various style and formatting changes. Recommended approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
This sounds like it was a big task.
Yes.
Maybe tedious is the word.
Big and tedious.
Big and tedious.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. That's it.
Is this the 160D rewrite that a lot of other towns are doing? Is this our version of it? Because I know Holly Springs is doing a big thing, Garner's doing a big thing. This is our...
Yes, I believe Holly Springs may be looking at their entire UDO, but yes, every municipality is and county is in a rush to adopt these changes. The deadline is July 1st, so, you know.
Last minute.
We've, you know, been walking on and on, but, you know, we stayed busy in the Planning Department.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Buck. All right. I'll open up public hearing for comments. No one signed up, close public hearing. Back to you for a possible motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, passing unanimously. And we've seen in budget ordinance amendment for the construction of Salem and Tingen intersection improvements. Mr. Russell Dalton.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm going to present you a project where we need budget, so that's really what the discussion is about. But also, Sean thought it'd be a good idea to refresh you on what we're actually doing with this project, because it's been so long in the making and has evolved somewhat over time. So this is the location of Salem Street at Tingen Road and Lynch Street. In May of 2019, I gave a presentation to council to talk about options for realignment of Tingen Road with Lynch Street and a traffic signal at that realignment versus a roundabout. The costs were substantial with that. Has proposed the decision from council at that time. And late in 2019, there were complaints from residents about traffic congestion and safety at the intersection. So during the 2021 CIP work session late 2019, council directed staff to proceed with the design of a temporary traffic signal at the location to mitigate traffic, you know, safety issues. It's intended to be an interim improvement where that would be a temporary traffic signal, and in the future, when the peakways connected, when Tingen is closed, that traffic signal could be... You know, we spent some six to eight months in DOT review after we designed it. And then council, on April 13th, approved a right-of-way dedication on a town parcel for some radius widening associated with that signal. So just refreshing crash data, data here, there were 18 crashes between 2015 and 2020. We averaged about two quote-unquote preventable crashes per year with a traffic signal. That means that if a traffic signal had been there, we would anticipate preventing two of those crashes per year or 10 out of the 18. The intersection still does not meet crash warrant threshold, but the signal was permitted based on a volume threshold from NC DOT, a volume which would greatly disappear once peakways connected and that crossing is closed at Tingen. So the signal would no longer be warranted at that point in the future. So to show you a design here, here's an aerial of the existing intersection, and then next to it is the proposed design of the roadway. So we would improve that northbound radius from Salem Street turning onto Tingen to help with trucks making that turn. As you can see, there's currently, his shoulder's pretty worn, and a lot of DOT's comments were concerning drainage in that shoulder on the town's property where we've since dedicated right-of-way for this project. We've improved the alignment where Tingen ties into Salem Street, and we've also put in a refuge for a crosswalk to get across Salem Street. So as part of this signal plan, you would have a signalized crosswalk across Salem Street as well as a signalized crosswalk of the Lynch Street approach. Any questions on the design of the roadway? And moving on to the signal plan, slightly oriented a different way, Salem Street running east to west, left to right on the page, and Tingen Road tying in. So you can see with the signal plan, there is actually a diagonal span proposed across between the two intersections to carry the signal heads. We will have pedestrian head pedestals on either side of Lynch Street. We'll have pedestrian pedestals going across Salem Street and a signal pedestal for traffic actually on that concrete island that we're constructing. So that is essentially the signal plan. Any questions on signal plan?
Was there, how, how close are we to be able to align to Lynch Street? I kind of thought maybe if we want another, I guess it's like 50 feet, but Lynch Street's pretty close there. Is it just not possible to align Tingen with Lynch Street here?
It's, it would be a lot of extra expenditure, probably more than, more than $100,000 worth of extra expenditure. And, and again, you know, once, once Tingen Road is closed, there's less, less value in making that much of an improvement. That was, that's what was presented in 2019 to council, basically realigning the entire road. So it's, it's a lot of extra effort. So the low bid on this project was just over $186,000. It is pending award, but we just need funds allocated, and that's what the discussion's about tonight. The traffic signal equipment should have around three years of useful life before the crossing gets closed, and we would assume the signal equipment at that time will be removed by the town and/or NC DOT. That is based on peakway bridge construction between the years of 2022 and 2024. Roadway improvements do provide long-term benefits, so even though the signal equipment may come out in the future, you've got, you know, pedestrian crossing and a refuge island, you could convert that later to a high-vis with rapid flash beacon if you want to. So there is that benefit there for getting people across Salem Street. And also, the roadway improvements do help the alignment, so that could be a safety benefit in the future, even, even without a signal. It's a better geometric alignment for drivers. So again, that's the motion, possible motion tonight to approve capital project ordinance amendment and budget ordinance amendment for funding the project.
How quick can it go up?
We are, I mean, we already have the bid. The contractor is, is asking us just about every day, when can they get started? So I would anticipate, you know, four months or so turnaround. Of course, you have to order traffic signal equipment, but we're talking about wood poles here, mobilizing for construction, but hopefully, you know, before the end of the year, we'd have it installed and operational.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
So motion to approve the capital project ordinance amendment 202116, along with the budget ordinance amendment 17 for the construction of Salem and Tingen Intersection Improvements, and thank you for bringing this back.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right.
I just want to say, I used to, this has been needed for so long. My kid used to go to Apex Elementary, and every morning, I would have to deal with turning left from Tingen on SL Salem. It was a nightmare. Like traffic would be backed up from Salem past this. You'd be trying to get between cars and looking to see what's in there.
Hold your breath and everything.
Yeah, it's great, greatly needed. I appreciate, appreciate this. I did have one question. I had some discussion with Sean over email a while back about potentially the light itself, when we do remove it someday, is that an asset that we'll have to reuse, or is that just not how this works?
The town of Apex is not really in the traffic signal business. DOT maintains most of our equipment, so, you know, it would be essentially if we kept the equipment, we'd have to store it in our yard. We'd have to store it in our yard, which Steve Maynard probably wouldn't appreciate if it's hanging around our yard for a long time. And then, and then on top of that, you know, if we, if we have a contractor that bids on a project, we'd have to get to the shop, and you say, here, I've already got the air conditioner compressor, can you install it for me? And a lot of places would be like, oh, you know, I'm not going to warrant you that, so...
So is there any resale value at all, or are we just going to throw this thing in the dumpster?
There, there, there may be some, there may be some value to it. I mean, I think that's the conversation we could have with the signal contractor at that time. It kind of depends on how long it's in there as far as how, and there may be rules about how we dispose of those assets as well. I'm not completely sure. We'd have to coordinate with purchasing on that.
All right.
We can hang it in a household house, it's historic.
Yeah.
There's a lot of things you can do with it, yeah.
Do we use temporary lights often?
Install temporary traffic signals? Not very often. This is rather unusual, but also, it's kind of unusual that we've got a road that's very congested right now that we anticipate closing in the near future. So that's not, that's not a typical thing.
I've had...
It's worse than Apex, I think, right? Can we all agree with that? The worst intersection in Apex?
It's my route home every time.
I mean, it's, you tell teenagers, like, we don't, you don't go this way. When you learn to drive, you know, like, it's, it's like, don't go this way.
At least during carpool, it's silly.
Just, you know.
Yeah.
All right, we got a motion second. No more discussion? All in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, passing unanimously. All right, new business, too. Council, again.
Okay. That's my first resolution. So in the last, okay, so the, for those who are watching online, signed by the president in March, and part of the, the newsworthy part of that plan, among many things, was the state and local funding, part of that, that plan. And one of the, I think, thing that was different about the American Rescue Plan versus the previous coronavirus bills is that it directed some fraction of the state and local money to smaller municipalities who kind of got left out of the, of the original ones. It mostly went to counties and larger municipalities. And so the expectation, I think, that the town had was that, based on our population, we'd get something like $17 million from that plan, which I think would be a game-changer for, for many of the projects we're thinking about here in Apex. And then back in... We were told. We were told that... They gave us plenty of numbers. The committee in Congress had those, had a spreadsheet with that kind of information. So I was so excited when I saw that. And then we found out in May that it was only $5 million, because they classified us as a metropolitan municipality and not a non-entitlement municipality. And us in Huntersville, North Carolina, were the ones in North Carolina, and there's 140-something in the whole country that kind of fell into that trap. So I wrote this resolution because I think that was the wrong interpretation of the law, and my hope with this is that we can send this resolution to our senators and representatives and enter this resolution into the public, the docket of the, it's an interim rule right now, we can enter it into the docket, in the hopes that someone will read it, someone will try to help us out either in the treasury or our congressional representation to try to get this classification of, which seems minor, metropolitan versus non-entitlement seems minor, but it just made a tremendous difference in the amount of money that we were supposed to get. So I'm not sure if I should read it, or, we all just read it and we're, we're good just to pass it, or should I read it out loud, or...
How long is it?
I shortened it a little bit. I'll read it, I'll read it. It's not too bad. Okay. Okay, this is a resolution requesting that the town of Apex is, requesting the town of Apex's reclassification as a non-entitlement unit of local government in the distribution of the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund in the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. This is going to be a little painful. All right, anyway. Whereas the residents of the town of Apex suffered illness, hospitalizations, deaths, and disruption to daily life from the SARS-CoV-2 virus that causes COVID-19, and whereas at substantial cost to the town of Apex government, at substantial cost, the town of Apex government responded to the COVID-19 pandemic by activating emergency management personnel, providing loans to local businesses, and postponing utility cutoffs due to non-payment, and whereas the coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund in the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 is intended to, and this is in quotes, "to mitigate the fiscal effects stemming from the public health emergency..." And whereas the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 separately allocated coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund to metropolitan cities, non-entitlement units of local government, and counties. And whereas the town of Apex is not currently included in North Carolina's list of 24 entitlement municipalities, according to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And whereas the town of Apex believes that this established list of entitlement municipalities, according to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, was intended by members of Congress to represent metropolitan cities in the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And whereas the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 contemplates treating any city which relinquishes or defers their status as a metropolitan city for purposes of receiving allocation under Section 1 for its status as a metropolitan city, nor has received funding under Section 106 for the fiscal year 2021. And whereas in the interim rule to implement the coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, the Department of Treasury posted an allocation for metropolitan cities document, which included the town of Apex. And whereas the Apex Town Council believes that the town of Apex is incorrectly classified as a metropolitan city in the interim rule, and should instead be considered a non-entitlement form of local government. And whereas the Apex Town Council believes that it is implement the coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, therefore, let it be resolved that the Apex Town Council requests that the Department of Treasury reclassify the town of Apex as a non-entitlement unit of local government in the final rule to implement the coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, and encourage... Donna, if you will, to... If we pass this, to send this along to those offices of our representatives, so they can see this. I've been in touch with Representative Ross's office and drafted this, and was like, help us, please. And haven't heard back, but hopefully, this official ruling will do that. I will... If we pass this, I will be the one. I'll put this into the docket. I do that for my job at EPA, and understand how those regulations work. So I'll enter this on behalf of, if you guys are okay with that, on behalf of you guys, into the public comment. And hopefully, someone like me, staff person at the Treasury, will see that and be like, oh, we messed up. That'd be the best case scenario. But, you know, or hopefully, the state takes care of it as well. But I think there's still a lot of roads that we're getting closed upon to try to fix this, and I hope we can proceed. This at least is one thing we can try to do to help out. That was a little technical. I'm a kind of technical writer at EPA, so it was kind of a technical resolution. Sorry about that.
Thanks for your work on this, Council.
Appreciate it.
And I just, you know, I'd like to add, again, with my colleagues, to thank Councilmember Gann for his leadership here. This is a really technical, complicated issue, but my understanding is, at the end of the day, what's going on is we're getting the short end of the stick here. This talk about what we're classified as, when you're classified as a metropolitan city, you are entitled to a bunch of other grants and benefits even earlier related to COVID-19. Some of the earlier packages would go to these metropolitan cities. So this package comes along and actually provides, you know, some relief to the smaller cities. And at this point, it's decided that we've switched and now we're a metropolitan city. So we've missed out on all the earlier money, and we've missed it on this money, and I'm pretty upset about it. And I'm just thankful that, sorry, Councilmember Gann is driving this process and, you know, contacting my people. I don't know what's going to happen, but this is the right thing. What's happening is really unfair to the tune of $11 million. So glad to support this.
Great. Good work.
I would also, unrelated this, I appreciate the mayor's gone with the mayor of Huntersville to try to advocate, and maybe others have done that too. And I think we should continue that because it's a pretty stupidly high amount of money that we're missing out on if we don't get this resolved. And I think every effort should be taken until we can't anymore to try to fix this.
Holly Springs is getting like, breaking the law that they didn't intend this, and this is kind of what we're stuck with. But yeah, Holly Springs...
I agree with all of that, and I do think that we should not wait on, you know, go ahead and do it, but I think we should just go ahead and ask for a meeting with our representatives. I do speak with Ross on other issues, mainly my job, but, you know, I think that we should do that. I think we can share that and say, let's have a meeting. I want to commend Senator Burr's office for actually being the one who responded to us back and to have a conversation, and we should go back to his staff and say, we had a conversation with our small business people, with our staff here. And, you know, so I think we need to continue to nurture those relationships on behalf of our citizens. And I welcome anyone to come to Jones Street. I was here all day today, to come and do that, because then you want our representatives to fight for us at that level, too. I mean, that's, to me, something that is important to do as well, that we don't do it alone. And I think our constituency, like, there should be a groundswell of support from people going, this is ridiculous. And that's a big push from not just us, but for people that we represent as well, to ask for what they deserve as well.
Yeah, I think I agree. And I think this is kind of a confusing, technical resolution, but I think people can appreciate $11, $12 million, whatever the difference is. We could do a lot of good for the people of Apex with stormwater, with some kind of infrastructure, some kind of direct funding to people. There's a list of things you can do with these funds that would definitely benefit our residents, and we'll be able to benefit them so much more if this is corrected, either via the state or via the federal way.
Both, yeah, exactly. We can take the technical words and turn them into infographics. I mean, you know, there's ways to do it where everybody is accessible to everybody, and I think that's important to do. So thank you for doing this.
Yeah, great.
All right.
Motion to approve?
All right, good.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, Kate Biscay, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, passed unanimously. New business three.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Ms. Holly Mares. Possible motion to close and use a town hall parking lot for the bone-sucking solves Peak City Peak Fest from 7:23 to 7:25.
Yep. So this is just a slight change, obviously, due to COVID and some other things with the Pig Fest event. They would be utilizing the town hall parking on campus, and then be utilizing the Saunders Street parking lot for the festival portion. So no closing of roads this time, just kind of use of different parking lots within the town to still be able to host their event. So that's what we're proposing. So this is a slight... So we had a consent item earlier on an amendment, and then this is an addition, because this is a separate item.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Opposed, no. Before you leave, I just want to thank you for all your work and putting together Juneteenth. You worked really hard to get that in a short order, and I know it was a lot of work you out there.
To Old Fashion July 4th, but on July 3rd.
Got you. Thank you, Holly. All right, Ms. Vance Holloman. Old business one. Resolution calling for a bond referendum.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. You have before you this evening a resolution calling for a bond referendum to be held on November 2nd, 2021, for citizens to consider approval of up to $42 million of street and sidewalk bonds. The resolution will also establish the form of the ballot question, direct the town clerk to publish notices of the referendum, and direct the town clerk to deliver a copy of this resolution to the Wake County Board of Elections within three days of adoption. This is by statute the final action you are required to take prior to the referendum. Local government commission staff has indicated this will be on their agenda on July 13. They are recommending approval, and we anticipate it will be on their consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion before we vote? Here and none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.